Twenty twenty-three. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. You could please review the accounts payable. Counsel, if I could have a counsel person read those at the beginning there for the public, I would appreciate it.
Department of Treasury. Nine, what's that, nine forty-one. Two and three quarter, two thousand twenty-one, fifty thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and five cents. State of Missouri Taxation Division for two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-one, seventy-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Department of Treasury, nine thirty-one, third quarter, two thousand twenty-three, one hundred and three thousand two hundred and ten dollars and fifteen cents. State of Missouri Taxation Division, nine forty-one, January of two thousand twenty-one payment, two thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. State of Missouri Taxation Division, nine forty-one, April two thousand twenty-three payment, a hundred and eighty-four dollars. IRS for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, or two thousand twenty-three, first and second quarters, five hundred and sixty-five thousand fifty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. State of Missouri Taxation Division for October two thousand twenty-one to July two thousand twenty-three, three hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. U M B Bank pool loan, eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifteen cents. Total of one million one hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Thank you, Alderman Osborne. Can we get clarification on now what is left? How many payments were payments set up with these different divisions? Or is this all paid, or are there more to pay?
There's still more to pay.
You still have Missouri's to go?
Yeah, E F T P S.
So what is our, what's the projection for how much left to pay that we're in arrears?
We don't have that yet. We're still getting the final number.
Okay.
On the state.
Alright, thanks.
Well, Gary got pretty good numbers from the IRS and the state on sales tax and payroll, right?
Yeah, that's what those are. But those are federal payable. That's federal payable, it's not state payroll. We still have to pay state payrolls to go.
Well, the state nine forty-one should be.
Have a few.
The payroll.
So the rest of the bills payable, I can have a motion to approve if you sign the fine, counsel?
Mayor, we didn't hear if that question that you asked ever got answered.
As far as what's left to pay?
Yes, ma'am.
We still have more to pay, and we don't have a concise number as what's left.
Because we don't know what the penalties are going to be on that. Because you're going to go all the way back to.
So without the penalties?
Without the penalties, we still have Missouri's nine forty-ones to do. The E F, E F T P S is still to finish. And they're not that much. But I would say in the ballpark, probably about fifty thousand. But I don't want to go on record until we actually be able to get into the numbers.
Sure. I guess I should have asked Gary if he could stay a little longer, because he's the one that's been digging into this and working on this diligently. So we'll have something concrete for the next council meeting then.
Thank yous.
So there, there were no, they're not going to give us any grace on any kind of penalties or anything, they're saying?
Not as yet, no.
Move the counts payable.
Have a motion to approve the counts payable for presented October fifth, twenty twenty-three, and second. All of those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, did you have a chance to receive the folder that I gave you at the end of the last meeting with the chamber receipts in there? A motion was made several, I don't have the exact date of the council meeting, but the motion was made and seconded, and all those who are in favor to give the chamber twenty-five hundred dollars to go to, towards their fall festival. We asked them to produce receipts to show that we had something concrete instead of a monetary donation, and they did that.
It's less than twenty-five hundred.
It was less than twenty-five hundred. But that is what they asked for, and that was the.
So we paying the invoices, or we fully paying twenty-five hundred?
Those invoices.
I'm not, you guys will pay the invoices, I'm not going to argue.
Invoices total one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and five cents, is that what?
Yes.
Up to date is? So we basically five hundred dollars less than what you had for.
We asked for twenty-five hundred dollars because that's what has always been done. So.
Paying this with that code or all your invoice, all your stuff that you have?
That will help, yes.
That'll help, so. Do you have any more you think's going to come in?
No, I think we're pretty well set. We have some other sponsors. So between, right now, we're over three thousand dollars in expenses, and with the sponsors we have, we're only about nineteen hundred dollars. So it's going to help finish paying.
Attorney? I mean, I've made it clear, I mean, I don't think you can, should be paying it. You've got, you just spent one and a half million dollars, you don't have a budget for next year. We're in the fiscal year. I mean, y'all have the authority to do it, but I mean, we I've said this many times, you can't just start in and out money. We stopped, we didn't pay the nutrition center. I mean, there are other groups we didn't pay. I mean, everybody loves the chamber, I'm a member of the chamber, I support what they do, but the money can't come from the city, but.
And we were advised at the beginning.
Right.
Still the motion is made.
Fair statement.
And I mean, I, I totally get what you're saying, and I understand, and you're absolutely right, attorney. And it frustrates me that we're in this predicament because counsel was not accepted and followed at the correct time. And now we're, we're going to have to, we might have to go back on, on your word, and that's, I don't like that.
We would like to set up a contract of services moving forward.
And I had discussed with Gary Osborne, because I had heard that in the past, business licenses, seventy-five percent of the business licenses that were collected went to the chamber. So I think we have like five thousand dollars collected, so seventy-five percent of the business licenses collected.
Yeah, but you don't, I mean, if they did that, that's not I mean, the right way to do it. I mean, you don't collect business licenses to give the money away to favored groups. I mean, I, we could sit here all night and start naming groups that we wouldn't want to give money to, that could come to the city and say, support my cause, and if we don't, we could get sued. That's another issue.
I usually get on the money, you have to be promised that you're giving the money, but I don't want, in turn, don't want to get ourselves in kind of hot water.
Can you just look at it as a reimbursement? Because is there anything on those invoices that would be an inappropriate amount, inappropriate type of funding? Bill, just a bill, if I get the right word, that the city would pay for a community-wide event?
I mean, one of the major expenses are insurance, that's why we require the area to employ certain events. General labor's three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Somebody want to read off? I don't have them in front of me. Somebody want to read off the list, or?
I do.
Accountable magazine.
Thank you.
Are any of the vendors going to be using electricity?
Yes.
I mean, where's that coming from?
Uh, the city, those voted on the electric panels.
So we're just giving away electricity? We got, we're going to give to Missouri Metal Craft with a six-figure bill, and we're going to give away electricity. And we wonder why Wes got so upset.
Tough decisions that aren't fun. Mayor, may I? Yes, John Russell, you know I love you. I'm going to disagree greatly, because this is about our community. Right now, this community needs something good happening. So are some of the vendors going to use electricity? Yes, they are, absolutely. How much? From nine eight, ten o'clock, when's it start, Marjorie?
Ten, ten.
Ten to two. There will be, how many? Probably fifteen, maybe twenty vendors pulling electricity, some of them bringing their own generators. But what it gives to your, our community is a lot. There, there's a lot of people that work really hard on this. I'm not one of them, but there's a lot of people that work really hard on this. And surely there's some way, either deny paying the bills, that's fine, but surely don't take away the electricity. I think by doing the billing the way she's giving them to you, that is an easier out, where you may not be giving the full twenty-five hundred dollars you agreed to, but you cover a little, and you still allow our community to have a bit and not take away something that you promised totally. Easy to back a little, but probably totally way. And I don't disagree with anything John also said, but I think right now, at all times, maybe our community does need a little grace, and at least it's with chamber, equal opportunity at all times.
Lord knows, the city has asked for a lot of grace lately.
I can tell you, I was on the council for twenty years previous to this employment, and apparently we did it wrong every twenty years, the twenty years I was on there, because we funded, give money to the, for the fall festival all the time that I sat on there before. So, and you know, we had a different term, nobody.
Well, if we were, if we had more money, it'd be a little different.
Well, I understand that, we might have the money perhaps if we was in, but then, but I'm just saying, you know, apparently we did it wrong all the way.
I mean, they penalized the community for something that they didn't do. They didn't get themselves in this situation. Do you think nineteen hundred dollars is really going to make or break the bank at this point? I don't know.
If you can't pay the money, at least, please don't take the electricity away, because that takes.
We would not do that. I would not do that.
Well, do vendors pay fees? I mean, there's a way to collect, pay the city back for the electricity. Do they pay fees to come?
We do vendor fees as our separate, like fundraising.
So where's that money go?
It goes towards expenses if we go over, go over budget. Or we, and, so like our chamber golf tournament, we use that money, goes towards our billboards that helps promote the whole city. The money for the fall festival, we just started a business grant, so we just, you know, we allocated to certain things that we do.
They're, they're definitely, we need to, we definitely, we need to have a partnership with D T M C and the chamber, and it needs to be funneled under economic development in our budget, because they do a lot for the community and small business owners in town. Gary Osborne said, I said, how did you all do it before? How did you justify donations to like Fishing for Freedom and our four-H group, you know, when different organizations come and ask for two hundred, a hundred, or whatever here and there? He said, we allocated this amount in the budget for donations. Once that was done, whoever came after the pot was dried, didn't get. Yeah.
There was amount in last year's budget for this group?
I don't know. Do we have a copy of?
The budget line that I seen, it was just a general donation, it said. I wasn't really breaking down the line.
So here we are, counsel. I need a motion to approve paying the invoices for the fall festival.
Five of these are advertisements. Is that right? Hannibal Magazine, A N S, A N S, Gerald Wig, The Lake Gazette. One of them is insurance, and one of them is dumpster scotty potties, in hand washing stations.
Gary, did you have time?
Yeah, as far as the electric, all these panels are metered. I suggest that I take the meter readings on Friday, and then we come back in on Sunday, or on Monday, after everything's done. And all these are metered, and.
That'll stumble through that.
Will you say what you see?
That gives us some information to do this after you all decide.
Now, the vendors need to pay a fee, if they want to use electricity, then the city gets reimbursed. I mean, that's.
And it was not.
So going forward, if they want electricity, they pay electricity fee, and then, or bring their own generator? Is that what Hannibal says?
Yeah. That's not the right discharge form.
Does this need to be tabled?
I've been told by him not to do it, so. I mean, you're beating a dead horse. We can't do it, we can't do it. He's, the attorney's told us not to.
So no motion? Okay, we're going to move forward. We have the Davis quote in here. This is for tree removal. O B had, we had discussed with O B that the, some of the trees are too large for our city to take care of the dead part and the upper part of the trees safely, so we had received a quote from, no, this isn't what this quote is. Where are the three quotes from? From that, from doing trees?
I don't know.
Oh, you are? Okay.
I got two on the term of man, the other one have.
Okay.
Is this the, what's on the holiday property? Is this around Dover Creek?
Yeah, this is the quote for the holiday property that looks like Sherwood Forest around it.
You don't know nothing about it?
This is what I received from Davis.
Were you asked from?
Yeah, he went down and looked at the property. It's one on our dilapidated nuisance list. It's not anything we can do right now, but he did give me this quote, so I put it in your packet. He had said six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to remove all of the overgrowth around that house. So that's why it's.
Does somebody live there?
No.
Who owns the property?
Renita Holiday, and she is in senior housing.
She is in senior housing, has been vacant for years.
Does she have kids?
No.
Yes.
What else? You got kids, but they're grown and don't live nowhere around here. Well, one of them is physically disabled.
Will they, will they sign an agreement to let us put a lien on for what we expend on the lot?
I don't know.
I mean, we need to.
Renita has a, a guardian or power of attorney to cover her affairs, and I'm not sure who that is. So that would be a discussion to have with those people. Okay, moving on. Mayor's report. The only thing I have a concern is getting everyone that handles money and administration bonded. So I spoke with city administrator, and she's working on that, so hopefully by next council, we have that. Yep.
That's what I asked him for.
Okay.
I asked him for quotes for next council meeting.
Okay. I'm assuming Shirley has been bonded ago, correct? She is? Okay.
No, Red isn't, and she's not, no. Because they, they lapsed. That's why I. The one in Hannibal, T S.
We can't hear it right here.
The insurance in Hannibal lapsed the city clerk's bond, and when I asked them for renewal, they hit thirty thousand, is what they said. So then.
Did they send invoices?
No, they did not. So that's who I originally contacted to try to get it renewed, and to say that it would be thirty thousand. And I'm like, it hadn't been that in the past.
That's probably through private, because when I first wanted to do, I got that number from home, but I was like, I didn't need it. So that's not done to the city, it was through.
So I contacted Murma to see if Murma could cover us under Murma. And Murma does not cover specific bonding for city clerks. They do for council and for all of their staff. And so they gave me, they gave me some things, and so, but.
Do they have the civil license office?
Surely never was. I don't assume it's not. Contract already goes through.
No, it goes through the state. That I know. So I, I contacted three local insurance companies here in town for a quote.
Okay. City administrator report? I gave you a copy of.
Just a little different. That's for bonding for your, yeah, no, that's for your, yeah. Sorry, she's notarized, and so she has a bond with her notary, so, a little different. So I gave you a copy of my report, and it was short and sweet and to the point. Murma will be, or not, yeah, Murma will be here in November to identify the fact that we had awarded, I got awarded all of the grants that we had applied for, for the various different departments, whether it be electric, the city hall, or through the street department. And we got it up to seventy-five percent of everything that was requested, so it only leaves about two thousand four hundred for this city to support the full amount of what is all the items that we need to ask for to, to have out of those grants. So we have like an A E D, so we have a lot of city, people that come to city hall. We don't have an A E D at city hall. We don't have surveillance cameras at city hall. It's upgrading and getting the correct barricades for the streets. It's getting the crimpers that the electric department needs, and also a fire safe cabinet for the departments, so.
And just to explain, these are risk management grants through Murma, our insurance carriers. So no financials are required. You know, we've been telling you guys, we can't apply grant grants since we don't have our finances in order. This is a different bargain. This is Murma, our insurance company, and they offer these grants for risk management.
It's more of an application. Rather than that, just helping bearing with the financials and getting those check requests and getting all that done, making the phone calls that we need to get through, and finishing up payroll. Payroll is almost finished for us to be able to start on, test it on within the next week, so.
This has taken forever.
Lucky you killed it though.
Somebody, somebody on the budget, Jackie is still renewing budget billing, so those did not go out today. She's looking at those, wants to make sure nobody was overcharged or anything, and wants to review and get contracts set up for the new budget, so Jackie has those.
We should be in there by the end of the week?
Yes.
Were you able to put it underway, the checks that you found?
I have one company that said, go ahead and run it. That was for the fire department, so I was able to get that. That was fifteen hundred dollars back for us with the fire department. Another one, they're going to look into it about issuing for us that particular check. And then the other two, they're over a hundred and eighty days, so I haven't gotten contact with them yet. So I was hoping to get follow-up with those two, see if we could get that amount of money back. So, yeah, so they are coming in. So the money that hopefully we can get.
So you had a conversation with Missouri Metal Craft, correct?
Yes, I did. And I sent an email in the description. Should be attached.
I'm hard to read, tell me, tell me if they want to do it.
We need microphones up here.
Yeah, we do.
Yep.
At least, you know, they're going to have to turn and trace them.
Okay. I don't know that I printed that out and brought it with me. Did you get it? Um, I had a meeting with the, the. She's accounts payable? Accounts payable clerk?
I can hear you, but they can't.
Um, I had a meeting with the accounts payable. She had come up to pay on the bill. She and I had a conversation in regards to the amount of their delinquents. They are interested in giving us a wire, setting up a wire. I said, we don't do wires. I said A C H, we'd be glad to do an A C H. But she wanted to take that information back to the owners, and then come back with a description of how to actually pay that, so that we can either do it on like a three month or a six month rotation of getting caught up, so, or paying it all as one lump.
So how are they doing their, their past payment plan? Like, with a payment plan that is already in place?
They got behind on it, and.
So they defaulted on the payment plan?
They defaulted on the payment plan.
Was that before, was that before the issues that we had in city hall? That, that happened a month before the issues we had in city hall?
Right about the same time.
So they already defaulted on a payment plan, why would we even want to entertain the notion of starting another one?
Yeah, it looks like their last payment was June sixteenth.
Yeah.
So they're owing.
We kind of agree that.
Three hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and nineteen cents is what I show on my sheet.
Oh.
Yeah, the delinquent amount's just one ninety-six.
Okay, hundred and ninety-six dollars, two hundred and eighty-eight is the delinquent amount.
Hundred and ninety-six thousand?
Yeah, hundred and ninety-six thousand.
But then their total bill is three ninety.
Exactly.
Right.
So they still have power?
So I say we give them thirty day notice, or we don't have to give thirty day notice, it's default of their payment plan, and we shut them off.
Yeah. Why would we give them thirty days?
To get their attention.
I say you just shut them off.
Why would you give them any time? They don't. Call them up tomorrow and say, we're pulling the cord.
Forty-eight hours.
Close the business tomorrow.
I mean.
So do I, do I have that in the form of a motion, counsel?
What about the jobs? How many conversations have we had with them as far as?
We've had enough to set up a payment plan that they defaulted on, but apparently we allowed them to default on it and still give them electricity. Exactly.
That's why they haven't paid.
Is this conversation that she was just discussing, the first one we physically had with them?
No. Ma'am, what's your name?
Vicky.
What's your last name?
Paula.
That's why we lose some money from that old metal craft, because they keep saying, we'll come and pay, well, they'll pay so much for whatever they own, and that people know. They always think that it's something else.
I remember when I was Alderman, this was an issue.
They're not the only ones, because out of all the rest, prior to. We are a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars from small businesses and residences up to the utility problem. That doesn't even include that, and that's what is in arrears now.
When were they going to bring a check in?
They're going to have a meeting with me next week. They were gonna have a meeting with me next week. His question was, um, have, were they gonna bring a check in? And they were gonna have a meeting with the, um, owners next week with me.
From what I understand, they're in a lot of financial trouble with other bills they haven't paid.
No, but the UAW strike, it's not gonna get better.
So, are the owners coming in for the, the meeting?
I don't know if they're coming in or live phone, but they're gonna have a conversation with me next week. So they want me to be there, so they need me next week.
That's just another week.
I have a motion on the floor that we call them tomorrow and tell them we don't receive some type of major payment at five o'clock tomorrow evening, their electricity or utilities will be shut off. That's my motion.
I would put a number in that.
Yeah.
If everybody just, I would ask that you raise your hand to speak, we're still conducting business up here.
Instead of just saying a substantial payment, I think there needs to be a firm number.
What kind of number you think?
I would put the delinquent amount.
The delinquent amount?
Hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
So I add it to my motion.
All right, I have a motion in a couple seconds. So the motion was, could you restate that for me, Alderman Green?
That if we have to have to call them in the morning, first thing, and advise them if they don't bring in their reurages that they owe, which is...
A hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
By five o'clock tomorrow that their utilities will be turned off.
All right, I have a motion. Alderman Moss, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. City attorneys report.
I don't have anything to add, but we have, already discussed, we're gonna discuss.
Uh, planning and building, Alderman Buckens. Parks and rest, Mr. Yates, he's not here, they haven't had a meeting. Um, Alderman Buckens, economic development report, anything? Alderman Osborne, administrative report?
Just here, he's been working, he's been working probably ninety hours a week, because he works on Saturday and Sunday too, on Labor Day. And Jackie comes every day at five, and she's here on weekends too, so...
Anything else?
They don't peel over.
They make an input.
Um, Alderman Shoemaker, I think the nuisance review board, public safety committee, is not in?
No, September eleventh.
Okay, yep.
For having a meeting at five o'clock.
Okay. October eleventh at five o'clock, nuisance, public safety committee meeting. Uh, city departments, George?
All right, um... Oh, yeah, I, I talk plenty loud, you can definitely hear him, I'm not worried about that. Okay, um, got a bid form here that we put up. This is for the manhole in, uh, the highway down here, right in front of the church. And, uh, this was from D L Excavating, this is for Mr. Manhole. What it is, is the lid of that manhole had to be welded on. So, now the churches, or the, the church's sewer line was bored through by a few boring companies coming in laying fiber optic and ruined their line. Uh, they wait on insurance, uh, to decide how it's gonna get all settled. But, we needed to be prepared, because when they pull the trigger, they're gonna come in and jump. So, with this being out in the highway, once they broke that lid, we just, we don't have the equipment or the ability to repair this that quickly. Um, so that's why I'm hoping that, uh, we can approve this Mr. Manhole tonight. I did have money in the budget, but of course, we're in a different budget year now. Uh, but I did request money in this year's budget also for Mr. Manhole, because it's, uh, it's, it's a great product. And, uh, when everything's said and done, it's gonna be smooth going over it. Uh, when, you know, out, out there in the middle of the highway.
So this was the, a budgeted item for our last budget, which we are still operating under technically right now?
Yes, there, there was, there was money in the budget in CapEx for...
And we didn't spend?
We didn't spend, yeah, I, I spent zero money.
But this could be reimbursed when the insurance kicks in, right?
No, no, the insurance is not for us, so...
And it was our city employee that welded this shut too, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't have a choice. It was every time it hit, the, the lid was flopping out. Uh, it was a real weird makeup, I've never seen one like it. It had a bell to it, and I think after it kinda got worn out a little bit, it just wouldn't stay. So, so yes...
The fiber optic company and the church and all, they're fighting over that deal is down there now. Who's gonna pay what for them drilling through their sewer line? And that's all upon that easement there, but...
Right.
It ain't not ours, but that ain't not ours.
No, no, but they're, they're gonna, they're gonna do what's called pipe firsting. They're gonna run a brand new line through the existing line, which goes straight into the manhole. But they need to be able to have that manhole open. So that manhole's gonna get opened whether we do this or not. The problem is, is what are we gonna have after they open it? Because we might have to just weld it, weld it shut again, and then we don't have access. And we have to have access, that, that's why the manholes are four hundred foot apart, so you have access every four hundred foot.
Are you gonna be notified when they're gonna start that, so you can get these people here?
I have to be here to, and I have to apply for the mode that, um, uh, license to let us get out there and, yes, I will be there because our name's on it. Uh, the flagging is gonna be provided by, uh, Brickman and We Melt Construction. This, this company, D N L Excavating, they're the ones that were in town last time and did all the Mr. Manhole around town. So those of you who were aldermen then, you saw the, the finished product. If you didn't, when you leave tonight, just go down to the first intersection and you'll see it. It's, uh, you got the manhole and about a one foot ring around the outside of the manhole, it's concrete. It's smooth, you don't even feel driving over it, unlike the, a lot of the other manholes in town.
Does this quote include the flagging and all of those services?
The flagging and all the services are already gonna be there, and these, these, these companies all work together. So, I made sure whenever, whenever, uh, I, I knew who was gonna be bidding on this, I got ahold of Brickman and said, can We Melt provide flagging and stuff for D N L and absolutely. As long as everything... D N L Excavating. Uh, they're in Payson, Quincy.
Oh, they're in Illinois.
Yeah, I, I've, I've had them here in town before, plus in Canton, they raised our levy, they did, uh, I've worked with them quite extensively.
They're respectable, huh?
Yes, absolutely, I, I am not worried about working with these gentlemen.
Okay, so George needs a motion to approve the, um, D N L Excavating Company bid of twenty-nine hundred for the one manhole ring and lid replacement?
Still may.
I have a motion, but in a second, all those in favor? Any opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. We did, or I did receive the, uh, information that was provided to me by, uh, Attorney Russell, uh, about the berm with the wastewater pipe that we talked about last meeting. Uh, specifically, it did say that the berm was supposed to be four foot tall with minimum of six foot trees planted on the berm. Uh, I forwarded that to Mark Ross. Mark Ross is going to come over, uh, with the contractor, we're gonna talk about it. It will probably eat up the remainder of the money that we had available for, to, to, to finish up the project. So, uh, you already did approve the, uh, the, the concrete, so that, that, it will, that will be affected. And I believe the next, uh, meeting, there'll be a change order for the, uh, there's a, a dehumidifier for in our sludge press room, and then the shelving. And Mark believes that we can go ahead and get that and still have money left over enough to, to hopefully complete this berm. Because the trees were still there, just the, the berm, uh, that, that, that money is not there because it was not, um, it was not budgeted, it was, was, wasn't figured in. Uh, Mark said that he had never seen that contract with the actual description. He knew of a berm with trees on it, he designed it, and even the design doesn't show it being four foot tall. But like I said, this is the first I've seen it.
I sent that contract to this, that, to, not this calendar. The previous calendar, more than once, more than twice. That berm was supposed to go in place before they started construction. That is a contractual commitment, the way it was working. Mark Ross has seen that contract.
Yeah, I, all I can say is what I'm told, so...
I was down there yesterday, and I don't see how you're gonna be able to put a berm in there and wait for it is now. I mean, because you're right up on the property land.
We are. It's, uh, that's for the engineer to figure out. I mean, if he's seen the contract before...
It's his problem.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna, it's his problem, it'll come back on city money. We, we all know how that works, the engineers aren't the ones that are at fault. So, uh, but, I, as soon as I know more, I will let you know, I don't know any more than that. Looks like you have a question.
No, not right now. I do, but anything, you can say it for myself.
Okay, all right, we did get our first dumpster, um, we, we, uh, I, I talked to you guys, it was been five, six months ago. We've, we're having problems with the dumpsters that, when we press the sludge that it goes into, they wouldn't go into the building far enough, so we had to have somebody come in and modify the dumpsters. The first one was modified, it got pushed in there. We can close the door, we don't have to worry about anything freezing anymore. Uh, hopefully that'll keep the flies down also. But, but yeah, that's all I got on the wastewater side. And then, uh, at the water plant, the, of course, uh, production has slowed down. And, um, everything's going great there. Does anybody have anything for me? Wonderful.
Thank you, George.
You're very welcome.
Dell, do you have anything for the airport you need to report?
The, uh, R L Hanger came out this week, worked on our computer. Uh, they worked on one at city hall, so they could get our billing straightened out. And they came in the airport and put the program in there so that we can adjust the prices needed without bothering the people uptown at, uh, city hall. So, um, yeah, I, I talked to Jackie a couple nights ago, and they're working on that billing problem. And probably will get those bills within the next week or so. The courtesy card that the B F W bought three, four, five months ago for us, do you know where that's at? They, they're talking about it had to be licensed and, and put on the insurance.
Okay, so B F W was going to, uh, they purchased a...
They purchased a van.
A van.
To donate to the city, to the airport, to use as a courtesy card. And speaking of that, I had a guy come in from, uh, Colorado today, who needed a vehicle.
Where is the van?
Right now, it's still in the, in the hands of the B F W.
Okay. No, he's on here. So it looks like we need to reach out to Dave Pelker and, and find out where, where we're at with that?
He told him, I, I talked to him a week or so ago, and he said he was waiting on the city to, to license it and insure it.
Okay. I don't have a title. We don't have a title, Dell, I can't title me, I can't...
Okay, well, we, we'll just have to get David to kind of visit with you guys.
So, holler at Dave in the morning and see what we need to, need to get that, correct?
And, uh, the airport grounds look awesome, we get compliments constantly from everybody that comes in. One of the best looking smaller airports in the state. We're pretty proud of that. We've had several crop dumpsters through using the airport, and, uh, which, you know, is, uh, goes a long way for our farming community. So, it gets used a lot that, that people don't really see. Other than that, everything going okay?
Great, thank you, Dell. We'll reach out to David Pelker in the morning and, and get you called and updated on the status of that thing.
Thank you.
Uh, O B?
Yeah, uh, before sending your package, main thing I did last week, since we were up here the last week. Uh, we had our extension forward over on the east border. Everybody's been on that, should have noticed it. So you make a lot of turn off Cleveland better without running off in the ditch. Now you run off and Rick's telling you that. Then we put extension out on, uh, South, uh, Oak Street. And main thing, did co-patch sort of the street water break, break was two months ago. So now I'd say it'll work again. And, uh, that's about the highlight. Everything else is good on the thing.
Thank you, O B.
What do we find out about the South Lake on the old bean runner?
You know what, I'm gonna be honest with you, I totally dropped the ball on that, Alderman Moss, and did not check on that. Do you wanna go ahead and address O B?
The, O B is, uh, can we do anything about South Lake out there? Because people out there, it's, there's weeds are three foot high right around the pond, I took the kids out there, you can't even get up to it.
Yeah, uh, if we add our tractor and more, we don't even know.
Still broke down, didn't it?
Still broke down.
It's just close. I'll claim last week, it's just close.
Where does it at?
Four pound old, I'm sure. O B, the next couple weeks will be in action.
You haven't had it all summer?
No, since, when we quit mowing last year, we got a different brush hog for it. Changed it over to high rock, well, we want to handle from there.
Okay.
All right, anything else for O B, council? Moving on, Carrie Lee?
Yeah, the electric department's been, uh, cutting brush under the tire line, uh, helping with, uh, meter reading. Uh, we had a big truck go down Green Street in Ward Two, tore down a, a line there for a street light. Didn't know who did it, but it was just the wire, so we strained it back up and squeezed it back together. Uh, not much going on in Ward Three. We're still continuing cutting trees, doing poles when we can, and work orders as needed. And in the building inspector part, I wrote two demo permits, there's a cheap property in Long, and one for one's, a concession stand to have that removed. They wanna build back into the same spot, told me it was the same footprint, it's not the same footprint. But, uh, we have to have a site plan approval for that. And, uh, and that's worth what time, we gotta go P and Z, get that, you know, the whole jazz. But that's all I have right now. So, you had to address some of our reports, fairly sparse, but, uh, uh, short week, or short distance.
Sure.
And if I can tag him off of, um, Carrie Lee's, Carrie Lee's also been interviewing me, with me this past week. Um, we have two really good candidates for building inspector, um, and we also have a couple more interviews coming up this next week. So, once we get that kinda drilled down, then we'll bring that to the council.
Uh, John, we could discuss the building inspector's compensation, like a certain percentage?
Yeah, that's how bigger towns often do it, where the building inspector gets a percentage based on the cost of the project. So, um, that makes it more, gives more of an incentive to, you know, work hard at the job and really follow through on things if he's getting a percentage of each job.
So, is this...
So I don't know what the number would be, I could find out if the council's interested in changing that.
We're doing fifty percent of each permit now.
Yeah, how much, but isn't each permit...
Commercial permit is seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
Regular residential is seventy-five dollars, so thirty-seven fifty.
Yeah, so you can have a million dollar project and it's the same fee?
Demo permits, twenty-five dollars, so twelve fifty, and plus, it's a five hundred dollar a month contract.
So we're paying the same, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's a multimillion dollar project, the building inspector gets the same as if it's a small project?
We have, we have a, uh, a price list for, like, for the elevator, and it's like three cents per square foot with buildings over seventy-five feet, it's guessing. I hate to say it's really not enough.
Yeah.
Uh, but if we start pressing people, we're gonna stop building here now. Uh, but if we start pressing people, we're gonna stop building here and down. But that's, that's just my thought. I, I know we need to charge more, but because of the liability for, for having buildings, people build, that's all we got.
So, we could find, I mean, it would take an ordinance, I mean, but it's something we could have a discussion about. I mean, there's pros and cons to it.
What's the building inspector's flat monthly fee right now?
Five hundred.
Five hundred? I think it's worth looking into.
Okay.
Any thoughts from counsel? Yep, okay. Uh, Terry Osborn, guess what?
Yeah? Now, we've been working on locates, turn-on, turn-off, work order, metering. And with the help of the electric distribution and the district department, we've been putting in, there's some gas services pulling out, that one's, our house gonna be demulated on because I can't put a bomb in that also. Interviewing. I got three candidates for you to review tonight.
So, right now, are you a one-man show?
Yeah, yeah, we're rolling down.
Okay.
You're ready to go?
Yeah, I'm going to Mexico because of the health issue.
Have this guy, Ray, that he done took off again?
Uh, no.
Any idea when he's gonna be back?
Nope, I have no clue.
Okay, anything else to add?
Uh, I'd like to thank the electric and the district department for loaning us employees to get this stuff done. I appreciate it and hopefully you'll hire some people tonight.
Thank you.
Start getting trained.
Thank you all for working together. Appreciate it.
How many positions you got to fill?
Huh?
How many people, positions are you looking at to fill?
I have to fill two at least.
Well, one thing, you said you had three people to...
I've got three for you to choose on.
Right.
All right, um, Chief James? Uh, Chief Phoenix? Okay. All right, so, oh, I'm so sorry, Chief Phoenix, I'm so sorry.
I'm so quiet now, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm trying to be quiet now. So, just go ahead, uh, last month, we had two more calls. Um, also, we did our big truck rescue class and that was a really good class. It was a two-day class for the guys. Um, also had parkits come in and, and get to train with us on that. Um, this month is gonna be extremely busy for fire department. September and October's only busy times. Fire prevention starts going into schools next Wednesday and Wednesday, we know the grocery Friday will be elementary all day long. Uh, and then we'll be doing the boot walk out at the core at Indian Creek playground. Um, just a lot of things, a lot of things going on and, and it's a good time. But that's just, uh, what I have. All right, that's it.
All right, thanks, Chief Phoenix. Okay, just now we have nothing to add for closing session. I could have a motion to go into closed session. We, we will again go to the library conference room, so you guys can feel free to stay here and remain seated and we'll... Okay. Do you really have to read it? Do you have to read it?
Yeah. I have a motion to go into a closed session. It's provided under section sixteen point zero one, um, revised changes to district regulations, plus the action of litigation involving public, private, and any confidential or privileged communication between the public and the private, or sort of similar to this.
Thank you, Alderman Osborne. Do I have a second? Real call load, Alderman Shoemaker?
Bye.
All right, we're now in closed session. I'm going downstairs, George, I'm leaving.
You're leaving? Well, I just need to, I, I need to, really, I need to because I have to do stuff.
Okay, I thought you could just leave us something down there?
No.
I can go, I can go downstairs, guys. Dell?
But you, I mean, you could do it.
No, they want me to go there and I don't wanna go there.
Okay, all right.